Usually pretty good. Last time we told you it was going to be late.
We're hot.
Hmm?
We're hot.
Are we hot? All right. So Dean, do you want me to go ahead and get it started?
Yeah, you may call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum, so.
All right. So we are going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August the 16th, 2022. And like to request staff confirmation that Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
Okay, roll call.
I'll call, roll Commissioner Gilmore. Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
Chair, Vice Chair Olson.
Here.
Chair Hay. So we do have a quorum of four of our seven appointed members. So that gives us a ability to take action today. I just would note the same thing I noted at our previous meeting, that any action that results in a two-to-two vote is not sufficient votes to pass something along. So a two-to-two vote would be noted as a failure to approve or failure to recommend. So we do have jurisdiction to hold today's meeting. So I'll pass it back to the chair to consider our minutes.
Okay, so move to approval of the minutes of the August 2nd, 2022 regular meeting.
My move, we approve the minutes of the August 2nd meeting.
Second that.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, that carries 4-0. That moves us to new business, which would take us to application CU 22-9 filed by Sean and Jessica Kindlesbarger.
Yes, this is a continuation of the public hearing that was opened on August 2nd, 2022. And at the close of that public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to continue that item to today's meeting to allow some additional supplemental information to be provided. Some of that is a slightly revised site plan that you should have at your place. Part of that includes elevation drawings that show the exterior materials and height of the proposed townhomes. And then another item that wasn't clearly marked in the packet, but which we'll go over at today's meeting is the, um, there's a drainage plan for the townhomes that are on the south side of the cul-de-sac. So we've provided you with some background of the origins of what was, um, part of the original shipli addition, which was platted and annexed into the city back in 1957. And north of this site, there's a Fawn Street that was constructed to connect to Cloud Street. The southern portion of that original street was vacated in 1971. And the, the Arbor Court formerly Drury Place Apartments were built over the top of that road. And so, um, things occurred through, um, the late eighties and mid nineties, but this property remained vacant and undeveloped. And so Dr. Daniel King submitted a new plan for the Brock Edition, which created an internal street with a cul-de-sac with lots arranged around it. And the property was downzoned to planned C2. And the purpose of that was to filter out high-traffic generating uses because of concern about the ability to get out onto Ohio Street, particularly with left-turning traffic. So to allow traffic to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis in the Brock Edition, final site plans for each of the internal lots on Brock Road have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission before any building permits are issued. There has been two reviews conducted by the Planning Commission. One was for the New Horizons Dental Clinic on the north side of Brock Road. And one is for the Kansas Quick Lube, um, which is on the south side. And so while those two developed with their Ohio frontage, the internal lots primarily remained vacant. And so Sean and Jessica Kindlesbarger have a contract to purchase this property from the King Trust. And they're proposing to construct townhome-style dwellings on those vacant properties. The plan that is before you comprises four separate buildings consisting of 18 dwelling units. Each dwelling unit would have an attached single-car garage. You can do multifamily housing in, or any type of housing in the C2 District through a conditional use permit. And the C2 District provides that the R3 District multifamily residential district standards apply. So we have summarized for those. And the only thing that was questionable, um, which without a fully-to-scale drawing, we can't confirm, that it appeared that the southernmost dwelling units were only 23 feet from the south property line. And so, um, those will need to be shifted so they're at least 25 feet away from that line. And those can be, those setbacks can be confirmed when we have a two-scale drawing. The other thing we would note is that, um, the elevation drawings show that the proposed building height for these two-story townhomes is 28 feet. So those are, that's additional information. The parking has not really changed. And we don't have specific architectural standards, but that is, the elevation drawings are part of the Planning Commission's review because that goes to the compatibility with adjacent properties and domination of the neighborhood. So as you're aware, the City of Salina is in need of all types of housing. And this is proposed as, we understand, to be a rental housing project that would bring 18 new units into the marketplace relatively quickly because this is a shovel-ready site. And so this could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public by adding additional rental housing options to the community. And it's also providing those in the vicinity of the Ohio Street corridor, which is a fairly active corridor. And of course, it would put these vacant properties, which are currently just being mowed, into productive use. So as we look at the impacts on the adjacent properties, as we noted, this property's been vacant for over 20 years. There is residential and multifamily properties on three sides of it. You've got an OCCK group home. And you've got an office building to the south. You have the Arbor Court elderly apartments to the north. And you have a bank and a, and a dental clinic to the northeast. And so what is being proposed is a three-two-story apartment, four-plex buildings, and one six-plex building. And the building elevations show the height and also the exterior design of the materials for your review. As we look at the surrounding properties, the Arbor Court Senior Living and Bank Six are taller buildings. All the properties to the west are single-family, low-profile ranch-style homes. So at 28 feet, this will be a little taller than those properties, but they're also backing up to those properties and have a substantial buffer between where those homes are located and where the rear of these townhomes will be located. In terms of parking, there's adequate parking that will be provided. The water and sewer is in place. There's a fire hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac, which can serve this property. And so there's no expectation of any public lines being extended. The applicant would be responsible for extending service lines to each of the buildings. We do want to focus a little bit on drainage. We have some contour information from a previous survey that was done when Mr. Newell's Building was built to the south. It may not, it may not be crystal clear to read, but I think if we can get that survey up, Dustin, then we can show that the, the pattern on the south side of the cul-de-sac is that it, it collects and drains to the south. And you can see this contour line here. And so what Mr. Newell did when he was constructing his building there is that he had to construct an inlet and pipeline. And you can barely see it highlighted there, but you see this contour here, which means that this water is running onto this property. And so he had to accommodate that by putting an inlet in here and an 18-inch pipe that drains down to Albert. And so that's, that's the natural flow. That's the natural elevation, but that's what's coming off the property vacant. And so one of the concerns that was expressed at the previous hearing and staff had heard prior to the meeting is that the southeast corner is the lowest point on the property. And there was a question about how the applicant's proposing to ensure that that runoff gets directed back to either Brock Road or doesn't pool or collect in the southeast corner of the property. And so this is a conceptual plan. And the conceptual plan is that the, the water would be directed here and it would be a shallow detention here. And then it would be released into Mr. Newell's inlet. And so by doing that and doing this detention right here, that would ensure that that doesn't overload, um, the inlet and pipeline that runs out to, um, to Albert. And so the only other thing we would note is that there, this site exceeds one acre. So before there's any earth disturbed or grading on the property, they would need to receive a notice of intent from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment before they commence any site work. The other thing we wanted to point out from a utility standpoint is any apartment building that has over four connected units is required to be sprinkled. So the four plexes would not be required to have a sprinkler system. The six-plex building will need to be sprinkled. Couple of things about access and parking. We have adequate number of spaces provided, one in the garage and one additional space for each of the units. All the traffic access in and out of this area would be from Brock Road. Based on the 18 units proposed, that's going to generate 132 vehicles a day at the, um, intersection with Ohio Street. That would be similar or could be even less than what the trip generation would be if you had a, um, medical or dental clinic or clinics built on the same lots. We, uh, if you want to go to the aerial photo, Dustin. We were contacted by representatives of Bank Six. And we, we can't, we wanted to bring this to your attention. And there's not anything that's directly linked to the applicant's project. But they expressed a concern that existing traffic possibly from, um, the New Horizons Clinic, because that's the most active use here, that cut-through traffic is cutting through here and going up Fawn to Cloud Street instead of trying to make a left turn here at Brock Road. So what a traffic appears to be doing is going through here, going up Fawn, well, actually jogging over to Fawn and then coming to here. And they express concern about a potential increase in cut-through traffic. And so we have a street, the street connects to Ohio. It's adequate to get cars out of this area to Ohio. I think we would just have to work with Bank Six to maybe come up with some traffic calming measures or other things that might discourage either the cut-throughs or the speed of the cut-throughs. But that ties back to some of the original concern about having Brock Road and having high-trip generation uses on Brock Road because there is some stacking and waiting involved to make a, a turn onto Ohio. So it appears that some people are addressing that by going up, up that way to Cloud. This is not a public street. It's just part of a private bank parking lot. So it's not intended to have through traffic. The zoning administrator looking at this project determined it to be single-family attached dwellings, not exceeding six units per building, and therefore not a multifamily apartment complex. And so this project is not subject to the strict application of the landscape regulations, but conditional uses are expected to have some landscape plan and landscape element. So the plan that staff was advancing and basically has been illustrated on this drawing is that in lieu of having a formal landscape plan on similar townhome developments, the Planning Commission has required a single or two front yard shade or ornamental trees per building. And the plan submitted by the applicant essentially shows this. We do think there's an opportunity over here to have a little more formal landscaping, either landscape bed or more formal landscape area here since it's kind of, it's green space, but it's, it's dead space in terms of building or parking or anything. So there is an opportunity to have a landscape feature there. In terms of the comprehensive plan, um, the Neighborhood Center concept anticipates residential housing with densities of 18 to 16 dwelling units per acre. And this plan has a density of 11 and a half units per acre. And so, um, this would kind of serve as a step down between the homes facing Lewis and Ohio Street. So we do think it's a good transition use. On page 12, we've highlighted some potential findings that the commission could make that could support approval of this application. The plan, subject to confirming the, the south setback to be 25 feet. The, the plan as proposed conforms with the development standards of the R3 District. This is a suitable location for residential housing. And this property's been vacant for over 20 years. This will put vacant lots into productive use with something that appears to be in scale with the surrounding uses. Adequate off-street parking is being proposed. The plan would add 132 vehicle trips per day to the intersection, but this was anticipated when Brock Road was originally planned. We have adequate public utilities in place. And the density is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So your choices with this application this afternoon would be to approve the conditional use permit application filed by Sean and Jessica Kindlesbarger as submitted. You could approve it, subject to specified conditions or revisions to the plan for constructing new housing units on this site. You could postpone consideration of this application to a future meeting date if you still think that additional information is needed. Or you could deny the application if you find this to be an unsuitable location for new housing units. If based on the information provided by the applicant, the supplemental slides that we've shown here today, you find that the townhome development would not have a negative impact on the surrounding area and would meet an identified community need, you could approve the conditional use permit. And we have recommended five conditions of approval on page 13 of your report. And that would mean compliance with the requirements of the building code and fire code, particularly as it relates to sprinkler requirements. That the landscaping consists of at least one front yard tree for each single-family attached dwelling or building, selected from the city's recommended tree list and planted by the builder, with other plantings selected by the builder. We would like to see a supplemental landscape plan for the area north of the cul-de-sac and have that submitted as part of the building permit. Development would be limited to the 18 townhome units. And the elevation drawings that were presented today would be incorporated into your approval, which would mean that if they want to deviate from that or go to something substantially different, they would need to bring that back to you. The plans and specifications for their onsite drainage improvements would be approved by the city engineer prior to building permits. And then they will need to receive a notice of intent from Kansas Department of Health and Environment before they start grading or disturbing any soil on the property. So with that, staff would be open to any questions that commissioners might have. Or we can go back to any slides, um, that you can want to call back up. We do think that their plan is responsive to the drainage concerns that were expressed. And we don't really think there's anything that's under the applicant's control that can deal with the cut-through traffic on Bank Six. But we thought we'd bring that to your attention so in case commissioners see something or have some suggestions that, that you could weigh in on that.
Questions for staff?
Yeah, I had one, Dean. Uh, in looking through this, am I missing a buffer on the west side? Or is that necessary with those houses on Lewis?
Well, if they're, if we had classified these, if, if this was an apartment complex like what you see at the, next to Central Mall or Reserves at Prairie Glen or something like that, then they would have to strictly comply with the landscape. But all of those homes back there have existing privacy fences. And so there, there will be green space between the back of these and the back of those homes. But we're not, since there's already fencing there, we're not proposing that a landscape buffer would have to be submitted for that area. But that is a discretionary item for the Planning Commission if you think one is necessary. A landscape buffer under the landscape regulations would consist of both fencing and plantings, or it could consist of a solid vegetative hedge. But since all of those homes have privacy fences, except I think one that has chain link next to OCCK, then there's not a lot to be gained with that.
Okay.
I've got one thing to add if I can.
Let's hold for any other questions for staff first, and then we'll have you make any statements.
I have some que, yes.
Go ahead.
Dean, did you say these are rentals?
These are rentals. They're not set up to subdivide into individual ownership. So these would be rental units, not, not divided up and sold. Not, not a condominium-type project.
Okay. And then on page nine of the staff report, under the third paragraph of off-street parking, this is just for my information. I understand we have 36 off-street parking spaces. And it says there's two off-street parking spaces for each dwelling unit. Where, where would those be at, Dustin?
So the, the box, I guess this rectangle shape that I'm pointing to with the cursor, with the square shape in front of it, this would be the attached garage. So each of these units will have an attached garage. That would suffice as one off-street parking space. And then in front of the attached garage, there's also a, a parking space in front of each of the units. And so each of the units would have a parking space that would be enclosed and then a parking space that is not enclosed. So it would have a, a paved area in front of the garage.
It'd be more correct to say that each of the units would have a covered space. So there'd be 18 covered parking spaces and 18 open parking spaces in front of the garages.
So from that drawing, all of the, that's dotted, to me, that would be the grass area is actually concrete area? Okay, so behind each of those also then, the square, is that a patio? Nope, on the back side. So is that a patio there?
Patio out the back, yes.
Okay. So on the front side of it, on, we're going to have the one entrance coming in kind of to the northeast there, Dustin. Go to, keep going up. And then go, so there's an entrance coming in off of the cul-de-sac there. That's all concrete for them going into it. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the dotted area that you see is proposed paved concrete. So you're going to have three main driveway curb cuts or entrances into the various townhome facilities. So there's a curb cut here that gives you access to, um, those four attached garages that you see with parking spaces in front of those garages. And then you also have curb cuts to the south and southeast. That also gives you access to the garages and the spaces in front of the dwelling units. Uh, I'll pull up in, uh, the, the elevation drawings to help kind of see where those attached garages are. So this is the black and white elevation drawings. And the applicant has also provided some color renderings that give you a better idea of the color and texture that's being proposed. But this would be a representation of, of what the product would look like. And you'd have the attached garage. Then you'd have the parking space behind the attached garage. So you'd have one that would be enclosed or covered, as Mr. Andrews stated. And then one that would be outside on the paved area, not enclosed and not, not covered.
The grass, that would be grass in between the drives. So it kind of helps to break that parking.
So if you were to look closely here, and I'll zoom in, the white area is actually vegetation or landscape area. So you'd have half the grass in between. So you'd have half the grass in between the off-street parking spaces and then you also have it out in front behind the curb of Brock Road and the proposed parking lot paving areas.
And then going back to the parking question, so at least from the plans, it looks like these are all four-bedroom complexes, but there's still only two off-street parking spaces required.
It's based on the number of dwelling units, not, we don't, it's not variable based on bedrooms.
Three bedroom? Oh, sorry, miscounted. Three.
Dean, who owns the retention pond or detention pond and who is in charge of maintenance of that?
Well, the, the detention area is going to be on the Kindlesbarger's property. So they're obligated to maintain that and have plans on file. It's, it would be a bit of an exaggeration to call it a detention pond. It's really kind of a depression or, or holding area. And so I don't think it would rise to the level of having a, a drainage easement or anything for it. But that's, that's where the water wants to go anyway. And so the concern is increasing from rooftops and from pavement having increased flow coming on to Mr. Newell's property to the south. So by sending the water here and then holding it and then releasing it into there, that should keep it at the same rate that's coming off the property in its undeveloped state today. That's the, that's the concept behind using detention is that you hold the water and then you release it as a, at a controlled rate so it doesn't all rush in there at once. Because today it's a grassy lot. If all this is done like this, you're going to have paved surface here, you're going to have rooftops here and here. And there's just going to be runoff that's going to go there naturally. And so you don't want it to get there too hard and too fast where it overwhelms the inlet that's on Mr. Newell's property. And so that was his concern.
Thank you.
To add to what Mr. Andrews stated, the drainage plan that's conceptual does propose for a number of, or an amount of the stormwater runoff to go to Brock Road. So if you look at the plan that we have up here, there's these arrows. And so not 100% of it will end up in the southeast corner, but there will be a certain amount that does. So there will still will be a certain amount of water runoff that will go to Brock Road and get into the public system that way. And then a, the balance will, would, would go to the south and the southeast. But those, those arrows that you see on the drainage plan are indicating where water runoff will run post-development in those various areas.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I guess I'm going to turn it over to Chair Hay at this point.
So no other questions for staff? Any public comment?
Mike McCall with M's Garden Architects, 922 South Marymount Road. Just a couple of quick things. Yeah, the drain, the large areas are kind of all the drainage. So as you can see, most everything from the center of the houses or townhomes forward will all be headed to Brock. So we were trying to reduce as much as we can not going to the back. My client, we've, he, I, I think he's had some conversations with the neighbor a little bit. So I think there's a possibility that, you know, it currently is running there now off of all those lots. So I think there's something can be worked out with them to make that a feasible thing. And on the, on the west side, we were talking about that barrier, there is a sidewalk. I think Drury Place put that in. It's currently there, wraps around to their parking lot. They used to have it, and it walked down and all the way over to Albert to get to Dylan's. So I think the residents used to walk, or they still do, walk that path. So having a hedge or another fence, we'd be making a kind of a alley back there that would be even more unsafe than it would be just open to grass and stuff as it is with the houses having their privacies on the backside. So, but that was kind of the initial look at, looking at, we shot grades and stuff out there. Everything kind of runs around the exterior property, kind of down to this corner and down to the far corner. So even the south lots where the insurance agent's at, he's up high enough, he's sloping back down to actually onto this property and then it runs to the corner and down into that drainage on the, in the, in the corner. I don't know if there was ever a utilities easement moved when they put that in. Cause right now currently the utility easement from what I found was in the center of the, his building.
Yeah, and I think that-
And I didn't know if that got modified in when he built or-
I think that easement was vacated.
Okay, yeah. I didn't know if it was vacated or just moved to the, into the property, but anyway. So yeah, that's kind of the main things that we kind of came up with from our last meeting we had here a couple of weeks ago. So any other questions?
I, I have an informational question.
Okay.
Mike, right?
Right, yep.
So, so when I first looked at this plan in my back of the board, I, I, I had a thought. Like, is it tough for these people to back out and then do they turn around this way and then go out?
It, it's going to be a little tight, yes. I looked at that. It kind of depends on if you're driving a, a, a little sports car or if you're driving a gigantic pickup truck. If you're driving the truck, you might want to pick a different unit to try to move into. But I'm, yeah.
I, I like it from, from an aesthetic standpoint, but it just seemed, you know, some people have a hard time, especially backing on the right side, you know, looking-
Right, yeah, I, I kind of looked at that. I mean, we could look at, you know, connecting those, all those together. But then, you know, I was trying to get as much green space into the front of these as possible without making a big loop on the inside with parking. So, but I, I mean, it'd be tough, but I, I think once you did it a few times, you kind of figured it out and-
And again, not trying to second guess, I, I kind of like the, the compartmentalized-
Yeah.
The four compartmentalized.
Yeah, I was trying to get, keep the concrete down because that's a big expense on this project, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can we pull those renderings back up? I think there's more room there than what we are imagining. There's quite a bit of space there to back up.
You've got, yeah, it's, it's more than what you think. The, I tried to make 19 feet basically in front of each garage so that grass piece comes out 19 feet.
Right.
And then I made, I tried to make at least 24 foot, at least from there to the outside curb. So you're basically having a two-way parking lot. So you've got, so there, there is quite a bit of space there. It, it's kind of deceiving, but I, that's, that was my plans typically when we're laying parking lots out. I tried to get a two-way.
So if you have a commercial parking lot with 90-degree parking, we require a 24-foot aisle behind the 19-foot spaces. That allows you to back out and head either direction. So if he's got the 19 feet and then he's providing the 24 feet behind it, that would be equivalent to backing out of a stall at Dylan's and then heading the direction you want to go, so.
So, yeah.
I think the trickiest configuration would be this corner.
That corner is, yeah, that one I kind of played with trying to, I flipped the houses so I could get more space there to get those two cars in and out. If you got four cars there, it will be tight.
Are you okay with staff's recommendations of the five listed on page 13?
Yeah.
And the extra landscaping that they are-
Yeah, we should be fine with that. That, we've looked at that, you know, down the road, we'll see with the parking. I mean, there is a, we thought maybe a chance of, we could put a few spots in there. So if we had visitors or something coming, they could pull in and park up there at some point. But at this point, we weren't going to go that direction, so. But yeah, we could look at some additional landscaping there. That would be fine.
I'm sorry, I'm late. I would like to ask one question. Are we, have we satisfied Mr. Newell's concerns that he has with the, with this, with the drainage? I know that he was concerned last time, but I didn't know if we-
Yeah, I don't know. I, he knew about today's meeting. He wasn't necessarily planning to come. He may be watching, but I did discuss, you, you'll have to scroll that up, Dustin. But I did discuss the concept with him. And so Mr. Newell had to bring, build this storm sewer inlet here. And he's got an 18-inch pipeline that runs down to Albert. And his concern was that if you had, you take grassy lots and you put rooftops and concrete paving and those things, that it's going to intensify the amount of runoff. And so the plan here is to take that runoff and to collect it, detain it in this corner. And then there would be a release right here that would release it at a controlled rate instead of having the water just sheet flow down here to this corner. So when you put rooftops and paving in, the water is coming off harder and faster and getting to where it wants to go faster. By putting this in here, it's going to collect and detain that water and then release it here. The water's going that direction today. And the reason that Mr. Newell, as he recalls, had to put that in is because he had to address the water that was coming to that corner today and find a place to accommodate it. So he's got an inlet here and then it pipes down to Albert.
Yeah, and that inlet is actually like a sewer inlet in his parking lot. So it actually, the top, as you, I just put, we just shot some rough grades and that was at 1229.5 was the top of the sewer, which it actually, so everything flows down currently and then down the curb and then into the inlet, so. So we're just trying to collect it, make it a little nicer, a little cleaner, a little more controlled flow off of that.
Their idea is to, to detain it and release it at a controlled rate instead of having it sheet flow off today.
And I know the, with the contouring that you guys have planned, all of that water is running to that corner now, that southeast corner. With that contouring, would it be fair to say that it's going to have less runoff to the southeast corner?
I don't know that it's fair to say it's going to have less. It, it might discharge into Mr. Newell's storm sewer at a slower rate than it does today because he's detaining it. But the total volume will not be less.
We're going to try to pipe as much, if we can pipe any of the roofs to the front, even off the back, we will try to get it to Brock, which will reduce-
Where you put your downspouts for your gutters and you aim them the right direction and try to get as much to go to the front as possible.
Could you go back to, scroll back over to the southwest? So the corner where we've got the, and go up to the, kind of the parking. So I know that when you were talking about the parking, that they had the 19 feet and they had the 22 or 24 feet behind it. But on these corner where you have these two right there, do they still have that same amount to be able to back out? I mean, because I can see where-
Yeah, we haven't been able to confirm that, but just looking at the plan without getting the dimensions-
Being an issue where somebody comes in there and they, I've got a pickup truck with an extended cab and a long bed and I'm parking there and my neighbor can't get out of there now.
Yeah.
I mean-
It, it's, that would be, that look, that corner is a little tighter, yes. Like I said, it, it's from the garage to the outside of the radius is, is 19 feet. So if you kind of took that, I mean, there's, as you're pulling out of a parking lot in a parking lot or like at Ballpark or someplace, it, it's tight. But I think you've actually got more room here than you would in a normal parking lot, so.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions? Anybody else from the public? Anybody online, Dustin?
We do not have anyone online at the moment.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thanks.
If no more questions for staff with the applicant, I'll bring it back up to commission for some action.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve application CU 22-9 with the recommendations from the staff, the five recommendations on page 13.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve application CU 22-9. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side. That carries 5-0. That moves us into 3.2.
Item 3.2 is a public hearing on a conditional use permit application filed by Tia Westling on behalf of Kids Creative Corners. And that is a children's museum activity center located at 122 South Santa Fe on the west side of the block. And the hearing today is on a request to add a, a group daycare center, which is what our zoning term is for that. It would probably be more correctly described as a children's day camp. But Mr. Hers will provide you with additional information about the application.
Thank you, Dean and commission. So the subject property is a property that originally had a two-story brick building that was constructed in 1905. And it is across the, the street on the east side of Santa Fe, across from the plaza that is currently being reworked for the Prickly Pear. And the building itself was subject to a fire, which destroyed the building in 1948. And a new building, which is the building we see today, was constructed in 1949. And that building that was constructed in 1949 was remodeled in 1973 and is substantially the same as, as we have it today. The applicant, who is Tia Westling, has a children's museum, which is, is titled Kids Creative Corners. And it is a children's museum in which there are different activities and experiences in which children can go into the museum and interact with, with different items that they have within the museum and play with them and learn and have stimulated learning from those activities. The museum was, was, received their certificate of occupancy in January of, of 2022. So it's a fairly, fairly new museum. And the applicant is, is looking to expand their operations in which they will have a, what they call a school age program license. It's a special license that the state has. So as we've, we've gone through and looked at other daycares, there are different classifications of daycares. The daycare that the applicant is specifically looking for is a school age program license for a day camp. So this would be a day camp that would operate in the summertime and possibly even in a year-round basis when school is not in activity. And it would be up for up to 30 children at a time. In looking at the compliance with the zoning ordinance and regulations, the county health department, along with building services and the fire department, have all conducted a site visit and determined that the facility does meet all of the requirements for that day camp that's being proposed. One thing that is unique about day camps that is different than other types of daycares is that with school aged program license, operations you don't, you're, the operator is not required to have an outdoor play area. So the museum itself, while it does have a lot of indoor play area, will not have any exterior or outdoor play area. The applicant is proposing to operate the group daycare center during the same time or in the same space as the children's museum, but at different times. And so what the applicant has done is created a schedule in which there will be times of the day in which the museum is open and there'll be times of the day in which the museum will be closed for the operations of the, the day camp. And in the times of the day in which the museum is open, the day camp will take field trips. They will go to the fieldhouse, they'll go to different parks, they'll go to the YMCA, they'll go to the Smoky Hill Museum. they'll go to the Smoky Hill Museum and other playgrounds such as that. And so that is all lined out in the, in the schedule that is being proposed by the applicant. And looking at the surrounding area and properties and whether or not the proposed conditional use will have any, cause any injury to the surrounding properties, the applicant is not proposing any physical changes. So the interior of the museum will still remain as it is, as a children's museum today. The biggest difference is that you will have care providers for those people that are in that day camp that are going to be present versus the museum today with, you would have the adults that bring the children to the museum. So that would be one of the biggest changes. So it's, it's really a change in how the property is used and not any changes to the actual physical structure itself. Staff believes that because there will be no expansion or alteration of the existing property or structure, that there won't be any cause of injury to the surrounding properties. If there are any impacts, they would be basically limited to the properties on the north side of the museum and to the south side, as to the west, you have a public parking lot, and on the east, you have Santa Fe and the Pickly Pear restaurant that is, is opening. And looking at domination of the neighborhood, all of the properties in the area are two-story brick buildings with zero lot lines, no setbacks, no off-street parking, and most of them were constructed in the early nineteen hundreds, and so they all have a very similar characteristic to the subject prop, property. The primary difference between the children's museum and the proposed day camp is that the day camp will have care providers for those children where the museum does not provide specific oversight for the children individually and that they rely on the adults who bring the children to supervise those children in the children's museum. Looking at off-street parking, there is some limited off-street parking on Santa Fe in front, but it is fairly limited because of the location of some of the landscape islands that are in the proximity as well as the crosswalk and covering, the street coverings that we have at Santa Fe. The primary parking that will be available, as staff sees it, is, is going to be the west parking lot. There is a fairly large public parking lot on the west side that should be open, particularly in the timetables in which drop off and pickup will take place, which is going to be approximately eight fifteen AM to nine AM and then four fifteen to four thirty PM. So during those time slots, there should be available parking spaces that are open in the public parking lot to the west. Some of staff's comments and analysis, the applicant has been operating a children's museum in this location for the duration of this year, since January of twenty twenty-two. The health department, fire department, and building services have all inspected the site, and there are no issues with the life safety aspects of the structure, particularly since it is being used as a children's museum currently, and that we do have adjacent public parking that should make dropping off of and picking up of children both convenient and safe. And so staff does have a number of alternatives here. One, you could approve the conditional use permit application as submitted if the findings of fact can be made. You could do that approval subject to any specific conditions or revisions of the plan. You could postpone consideration if you feel additional information is needed, or you could deny the application if you don't feel it is conducive to, to the site and that there would be injurious effects upon the surrounding neighborhood. Staff's recommendation, if the planning commission believes that the subject property is suitable for a group daycare center and that the core of finding the fact could be made, staff does have a number of conditions that we've listed on the bottom of page seven. One is that no more than thirty children may be cared for any one time in accordance with state standards for school age program licenses, which is what this particular daycare would be. A second possible one is that the planning commission could also use their discretion to limit it, limit the conditional use and the daycare or day camp to the, to the actual specific applicant and so that it does not be, it would not be transferable to another provider. This is something that the planning commission has done on other daycares, but it's not something that you're required to do, but staff does list it as an option. And we list it as an option because conditional uses typically run with the land unless otherwise noted. And so what that would mean is if the, the planning commission were to approve the requested daycare center and the applicant relocated, a new individual could come into the site and operate a, a daycare center from this location. So with that, staff will take any questions that you might have, and we do have the applicant here available to answer any questions as well.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, the applicant would like to step forward.
I've just got one question. What is, what's your total number of staff at any time when you are at capacity of thirty children?
So I have to actually keep it at twenty-eight because it's thirty capacity, so it's two to, one staff to every fifteen kids. So we'll have two staff members and it'll, we'll go under that number because we can only have actually twenty-eight kids based off the two staff members.
And then your times of operation, so you're looking to be doing this during the summertime and like during school breaks? Is that correct?
Yep.
And so school age, what is that age then? I mean, is that five to eighteen or?
So they actually, the license requires them to be enrolled in kindergarten already, so they have to be, so even if they're five, they have to be in kindergarten already, and then it can only go up to eleven.
Okay, so it's kind of grade school.
Yeah, grade school.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
With the museum as it's operating now, where do most parents or guardians drop the kids off at?
So right now you can't, it's not a drop off, you come, so usually they park in the back right now or on the sides, but we have hosted camps, like three-hour camps there all summer. We did that, we just didn't do the, the licensed school age one, and parents, yeah, would just drop off in the back. And our party room, that we call it, like our main educational room, it's right off the first exit. When you walk in, you just go straight into it. So they just, they don't even get out of their car, they just drop off and go.
So can you bring up the floor plan? Yeah.
Yeah, so that room, like the party room right there, is, the doors are right there and they just come right in.
And that's off of the west side then, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. And then for your off-site activities, so are you planning for them to be walking to those locations? Are you transporting them?
So there will be three transportations, and we're working on that because we're going to take some field trips, but that's still in the works right now of the transportation piece. I'm trying to find the legally with KDHE to find that part out, but we do walk. So we actually did, in all of our camps, we did practice rounds of safe routes. We all have the, our directors and us, we have bright shirts, so we do safe routes through those and we kind of map those out of how long it takes. No, no walking is more than fifteen minutes. The, it's, we're surrounded by like five amazing parks right there, so, and the library and everything. So it was a pretty easy process of walking, yeah.
So you, you did say that this is going to be the hours of operation, Monday through Friday. Is the, what, what are the months of operation then? Is it going to be like during the school year, you will not have any activities?
So our, we're going to do both. So during the summer, we'll, that will be our main one where it'll be a twelve-week program for school age kids. So it's like the YMCA and the fieldhouse do it, the childcare, and then we're going to operate just a couple like peekaboo's, like during in services for USD three oh five and stuff. Those will be the other days that we operate under this one, but the rest of the time we operate fully just under like my museum. But I'll be licensed all year long, so I'll fall under that license. So anytime I host a camp of this, I will be not open to the public while they're in the facility.
Okay. And do you have any problem with the condition of no more than thirty children? And do you have any problem if we do put a condition saying that the conditional use permit is non-transferable? I mean, it's, it's for you and you, you only?
Yeah, I think the license has to be under me anyway, so I'd have to go through the whole nother process if I change.
Okay. Any more questions? Anybody from the public? Anybody online?
We do not have anyone online right now.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no more questions for staff or no more questions for applicant, I'll bring it back up to the commission for action, please.
I feel like Ms. Westling has everything in line with what she needs to do, and I would feel more comfortable with limiting this to the applicant as opposed to the building in this regard. So with that in mind, I, I will make a motion that we approve this conditional use permit, which is application CU two-two dash one zero with the condition that no more than thirty children may be cared for at any one time in accordance with state standards for school age program license.
And, and the four recommendations of staff above that?
The findings.
And the four findings on that same page, correct.
I'd, I'd second that motion. And that is also to terminate with applicant only for the conditional use, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side. That passes five zero. Thank you.
I, I just had one more question of the applicant. Is there any plans to expand this into a senior citizen program?
You know, I've been asked a lot from parents if they can have a date night, if I can do a fun date night down there.
I looked at all the stuff on that, that itinerary and I was like, oh yeah, this is fun.
Can you tell I'm a teacher while I'm glad to do this?
Legislative matters none, administrative items none, preliminary discussion items. Dean?
We do have a preliminary discussion item to discuss with you as we're, we're coming off a primary election and heading to a general election, and the preliminary discussion item deals with the planning commission considering authorizing the initiation of a text amendment to further clarify where temporary signs are allowed to be placed in the right-of-way during election season. And we had, I think the, the planning commission spent almost a full year reviewing things related to temporary signs. And we had passed a set of ordinances dealing with temporary signs, one of which prohibited the placement of signs in the public right-of-way, which is fairly standard. And then the Kansas Legislature passed a bill that was not intended to, but did allow signs to be placed in the public right-of-way because the sponsors of the bill misunderstood that property owners don't own the property that's between their sidewalk and the street. It's not private property, it's public right-of-way, but those writing the bill thought it was. And so the, the purpose of the bill, why it was passed at all, is that there was a belief that people that lived in a situation like, let's say you lived in a home and you backed up to Schilling Road and you've got a solid fence in your backyard, and if you put a sign out in your yard, nobody could see it from Schilling Road because it's behind your fence. So the purpose of the Kansas legislation was to allow people to put the sign outside their fence in the unpaved, grassy right-of-way for city streets or county roads. And so it was a belief that those people were disadvantaged because their signs couldn't be seen. And so the purpose of it was that the, the, probably the biggest problem in the bill and why cities couldn't figure out what to do with it, because it says you can place, you can't prohibit the placement of political signs on the unpaved right-of-way for city streets on private property during a forty-five day period. Well, those are completely contradictory because the unpaved, grassy right-of-way for streets is not private property, it's public property. And so based on Attorney General's opinion, I, along with one of our city attorneys, drafted a text amendment, and we tried to address that by allowing an unlimited number of temporary signs to be placed in the public right-of-way. But the way that it was written, it allowed a private property owner to give permission to put a sign out in the grassy, unpaved right-of-way. And it was not intended and did not authorize the placement of temporary signs in the medians of streets like South Ninth Street or Belmont or Broadway or places like that. So even though in all of our reports to the planning commission, city commission, we indicated that the right to do that rested with the property owner, not the candidate, we still had candidates that were putting signs out in those areas, not with the permission of the abutting property owner. So in some cases, we just had sign farms in those, those grassy areas. So even though that was the intent, there was no specific language that expressly prohibited it. So to avoid that situation, we're suggesting that there needs to be a further refinement or clarification of the amendment that would explicitly prohibit the placement of temporary signs in Boulevard medians or other grassy islands. And I don't, I don't know if you still have the avail, access to the, the ArcGIS aerial photos, Dustin?
Mm-hmm.
So if you can pull up the aerial photo, we'll just show some of our areas. So if you can go just down, up, up to Cloud in Ohio and focus on the east side. So this, this right here is a public frontage road. And so these property owners could give permission for a candidate to put signs out in the grassy, unpaved right-of-way abutting their property, but they don't have any grassy, unpaved right-of-way abutting their property. They have a concrete abutting their property. Then you have this public street, and then you have this grassy island that's between the right-of-ways, and there's no abutting property owner to that. So technically, that area is off limits to election signs, and we continually pulled election signs from that area because there's no private property owner who could give that permission. But nonetheless, that that was the intent, we, we believe that language needs to be more explicit that would define these areas as, as off limits because there's no abutting property owner to give permission. When you go back and look at the legislation and what the legislature was trying to do, they were trying to confer rights on property owners to express their political opinions. They were not trying to create an area where you could just go out and put signs out in medians or any grassy areas. As a matter of fact, the, the law specifically prohibits the placement of signs at interchanges or in KDOT right-of-way. It's just more vague about cities' public right-of-way. So initiating that type of text amendment would not commit the planning commission to approve what staff comes up with. It would just allow it to be filed and then set for discussion and consideration. So the, under state law, staff cannot just initiate a change. A change could be initiated by the planning commission or the city commission or a property owner affected by. a property owner affected by a regulation. So our our practice is to come to the planning commission, explain the issue and see if there's support for initiating an amendment. What we would do is put the draft amendment together, schedule it for a public hearing before the planning commission gets your feedback and reaction, and then you can you can decide whether you want to approve such an amendment. But to get the ball rolling, somebody needs to initiate it. So that's what we're asking for today.
So I have a quick question for you. So can you pull up Schilling Road?
See how fast Dustin can get there.
So yeah, can you zoom in along Schilling Road there then? And you have the sidewalk that's there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if you keep going in through there, so you have, yeah, zoom in a little bit closer to the sidewalk. So you have property, a grassy area behind those properties, and the majority of those are privacy fences through.
Yeah, there's fences there.
So.
So
Public.
That is public right of way for Schilling Road.
So if somebody can go in there and put a political sign on there without that property owner's.
No, they cannot.
With their.
With their permission. The right, the purpose of the bill was to let the person that lives in this house express their political opinion by placing a sign for all to see out here because if they put it here, no one would see it.
Okay, so on the south side of the sidewalk, though, that's a grassy area. Can it be placed there?
Yes, but that's a little tight. It might interfere with traffic or it might interfere with the flow of going up and down that path. But if you could fit a sign in there and turn it away there, then this right of way here is abutting this property. And so this owner could place a sign or he could have a candidate knock at his door and say, can I put a sign out behind your fence here? And if they say yes, then they can do it.
They can do it. But in the property, the grassy area to the south, which that's probably three feet wide through there. If I'm a candidate, I can go out there and place a sign through there without asking?
No.
No, you have to have permission.
You have to have permission from the abutting owner.
From the one on the sidewalk to the roadway?
This, the rights of this property owner extend from this line out to the center of Schilling Road.
Okay.
So he has those rights. So the way the law looks at it, if for some reason Schilling Road got closed or vacated or whatever, all of this property from the center of Schilling Road would go back to this owner. And so anywhere from here
To make sure.
out, but it, the right of way abuts the property. And so it's just a matter of, you can't interfere with visibility. You can't have a sign that hangs out where people are going to hit it. But if someone wanted to put it here instead of here, I've never seen any signs out here. I've seen signs back here.
Right.
The, the main problem with the authors of the bill was that they believed that this and this was private property that belonged to this owner and didn't realize that it's public right of way that belongs to the public. And so that is why you have the contradictory terms that says that you can put it on the unpaved right of way for city streets on private property. There is no unpaid right of way for city streets. It's private property. But nonetheless, that's how the bill got written. And if you're familiar, have spent much time in the city of Wichita, there are major streets that are just lined with retaining walls and with walls that back up to the streets and all the homes. You can't see the homes because there's fences or walls lining the street. And so it was a group in the city of Wichita that wrote the bill. So all those people that had those solid walls could express their opinions by putting their signs behind their walls. And so.
Is the eight square foot number that's handed down by the state? We can't affect that, is that right?
No, that is, that is our number. And that's partially based on the Supreme Court decision of Reed versus Town of Gilbert. But that's been considered to be a a reasonable, a typical campaign sign is not eight square feet. It's not that large. And a typical the, the part, and they've walked some of that back, but the whole part with, if you have to redesign to know whether it complies, is unconstitutional. That also creates the confusion that during election season you can put out a garage sale sign just as much as you can put out an election sign because we can't write a code that defines signs by what they say, only where they're located and how big they are and not obstructing traffic.
So you could have Anita Jo's sign? That'd be legal?
Yes. So during election season, we do not enforce, you could have a sign that's too big, it could violate signs. If I'm, when I drive home tonight, I'm going to take the Wingstop sign that's stapled to the power pole because that, that's still not, that's still not legal. But this deals with temporary signs that are stuck in the ground out in those areas. So what we were looking for this evening was just for the commission to by motion authorize us to initiate a clarifying text amendment that would explicitly prohibit the placement of signs in Boulevard medians and other grassy islands. We thought that was understood, but it became clear during primary season that that was not understood. So.
I mean, I don't see that, that much difference between our illustration there on Schilling Road and what we looked at lining Ohio. You're almost taking the right of way of those businesses on Ohio to put out any signage because they have a parking lot.
That, that's how their right of way is used.
I'm just saying.
So they, they don't, those businesses don't have any right to give anybody permission to put signs out in that area because their, their rights don't extend out to that area. Just like a homeowner who lives on Belmont can't give somebody permission to put a sign in the middle of the median on Belmont because their rights don't extend out there.
So the whole reason for that is that that frontage road is.
Is that, that's a public street. So their, their property ends right, right there. They do have some right of way there, but that, that is completely consistent with I, I have taken more than my share of banners for sandwich shops and the insurance office here. They put their feather flags out in that area. And we said, you don't own that. You don't have any right to have your feather flags there. You can have them on your own property. They still have feather flags, but they're mounted to their building. And it's on their own property. So it's not that they can't have feather flags. They couldn't have feather flags out in the right of way.
Right. And those business owners could put a sign out in front of their business. It's just not one that they can stick into the grass. They would just have a different type of sign.
Right. They could put a wall on, the wall sign up or something like that. So they're not, and there's, there's other examples. Dustin, can you go over to South Ninth Street by Broadway?
Yeah.
So we've taken upon ourselves to change the wording from the state statute from private to public?
Well, we've interpreted it that way because there is no such, there's no such thing. All cities throughout the state didn't do anything in response to this bill because it was, it was to be blunt, nonsensical. It didn't make any sense to anybody. So nobody responded to it until the Kansas Attorney General said it was a constitutional bill. And then in most cities, instead of amending their sign codes, just said during election season, we're going to comply with this state statute. And so we, we put it into the, the sign code. So if you could zoom in on Ninth Street Place there, Dustin, to the north, right up in here. Okay, so what we're doing and we will do for you when we have our, our public hearing, so we're going to have a series or set of maps. And I need you to zoom in one more, Dustin. So we got all these homeowners here on Ninth Street Place. It's narrow, but they have a little grassy area. Of course, they have front yards. There's if you have a front yard, there's really no compelling reason for you to put your signs out in the right of way because they can be seen in your front yard. But this area here, they can give permission to that. This is a public street right here, and this is a grassy median that's between two public streets. So there's no there's no private, abutting private owner who can give permission for signs to be placed there. So that, that would be an area that's off limits. Then go to the south, Dustin. Keep going south. And then zoom in, no, you're going too far. So zoom in on this area here. So these are abutting owners and they butt this gigantic right of way here. And this, this owner has rights that extend from here all the way over to Ninth Street. So there's no intervening area there. So there's no separate public right of way that cuts them off. So this whole area, this all abuts the back of these houses, just like Schilling Road. It's just wider. So that is an area where this owner could put his sign out here if he so desires.
So the operative word in this whole thing is that it has a road or on both sides of that property?
Yeah, the way the, the way that the code was written, it allows an abutting property owner to place the sign. There's nothing in the code that says candidates can place signs. It says the abutting property owner can place the signs. So this owner right here, if they, they could have, they could have a sign along Highland, but if they wanted to express themselves, they could put a sign out here to support their candidate or their issue because they're abutting.
Who mows that there?
The city.
The city does.
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's, I guess that's the part that just don't make sense. If the city takes care of it, why, I mean, why it's allowed?
It's just, it's just the way, just as Commissioner Farber pointed out, it might seem more more expected that you couldn't put signs out here just because of the size of it and it's taken care of by the city than what you have over there on Ohio. But the operative word is the right of way abutting your property. And this is all right of way that abuts this property because there's nothing in between. So go over to the, the medians on Broadway, Dustin. So if you live over here on Maple and you've got a privacy fence here, you can put your sign out here along Broadway because that abuts your property. But this median that's out here in the center, that, that's separated from your property by this intervening road. So you can't put your election sign out in that median.
So if that road were taken away, where would the property rights of that owner extend?
It would extend to the, the center of that.
So in essence, that's a.
Could be private property.
It could, but there are numerous cities in Kansas that are more explicit than ours and they there is not a city in Kansas that allows signs to be placed in a median of a Boulevard. It's just how, what language they use and how to get there. And we thought when we wrote it that we were making it clear in the legislation, it was intended to give property owners the right to express themselves, not candidates.
Sure. No, I believe it would be a safety issue to have signs there in the median vision and so forth.
So all, all of those, and I, you know, we've discussed that as a group and, you know, this, how this lines up, it may it may, you know, the amendments may go into effect, you know, just prior to the the general election. But one of the things that we're, we're going to do and try to provide to candidates and their, to the election office and others is just to have a series of maps, which is not that hard to do to say this, this site's okay, this site's not okay because of this. And so we figure if we do that and say this, this is an approved location, this is not an approved location, and we can provide that, then we'll have less difficulty in that regard.
Are you ready for a motion?
You bet.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we recommend that the staff initiate a clarifying text amendment to section forty-two dash five oh eight that would specifically explicitly prohibit the placement of temporary signs in Boulevard medians and other grassy areas, islands that are bordered by streets on both sides.
I'd second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
This will be brought back before us to discuss later, I'm assuming.
Yes. All that, that's doing is we'll initiate the text amendment, we'll set a schedule, and then there will be a public hearing on that. And so we'll, we'll try to provide notice to the election office and others. But all this does is, again, you're, just because you voted to initiate it, doesn't mean that you have to approve it later. So you may not like what we come up with.
So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes five zero.
I'll tell you, I was confused in there when I was reading through it because the one line that confused me said, although in its staff reports to the Planning Commission and City Commission, staff indicated that the intent was to now allow temporary signs in Boulevard medians. I think it was a typo.
Yeah, it's probably supposed to say not.
But I was confused. I thought we were going a different direction here. So thanks for that clarity, too.
Okay, any unfinished business or other business, Dean?
For other business, we would clarify, I looked to see the appointment resolution. It was still blank, so I don't know anything. But August twenty-second is the date that the City Commission will consider board appointments to Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Downtown Design Review Board, Harriage Commission. Ironically, the Harriage Commission, which is sometimes hard to fill, is the only board we have with all, all the appointed members. The Design Review Board is four out of seven. The Board of Zoning Appeals is four out of seven, and this is seven out of nine or six out of nine because we don't know what the status of Mr. Gilmore is. So we're hopeful that we get a few more planning commissioners appointed so we're not always skating on thin ice for quorums. And we really struggle with the Board of Zoning Appeals with quorums. And so we had to not, we had to reschedule an item for the Board of Zoning Appeals because we didn't have a quorum. So that, that becomes important. And then September on the sixth, we will have the River Run Phase Two development coming back on your agenda. And then the month of September, you will look for business meetings. We'll be appointing chairs and vice chairs and officers and also have orientation and training for new and old members. So I'm thinking on the twentieth of September. So I'm thinking on the twentieth of September, we'll probably have a steady session that'll have training and orientation. And then we'll have the election of officers at that meeting. The sixth may be too tight to get all the new members lined up and get all their contact information. So we'll probably look to do the, your annual business meeting on the twentieth of September.
So Dean, I just got one question. With my election being over and I'll, I'll be taking, taking my seat in January for the, the County Commission.
Right.
I have to drop from the, I mean, from the Planning Commission, is there anything that tells me, or says that I, is it a conflict of interest being on the County Commission and?
I don't know that it's a statutory conflict. I have to confirm that with our city attorney. But it would be a conflict from the standpoint that you're, you would be serving the county and serving, trying to serve the city at the same time. And that might have cases where those two missions would conflict. But for certain, you can continue to serve on the Planning Commission till you take your seat on the County Commission. And then by then, we'll have a firm answer for you.
That was the only other thing I had to bring up. Another business was, since we last met, Commissioner Hay won his election to the Saline County Commission, and I wanted to congratulate him as a board here.
Thank you.
In terms of housekeeping, before Mr. Hay leaves, he's got three sets of minutes to sign.
Okay, I don't see anybody online or any public forum. So I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.